So this is kind of even more reason I've never done.
All right, let's get going. Okay, welcome to the April 1st meeting of the Ry Brook Zoning Board of Appeals. With us this evening, we have Village Council Christian Gates, Building Inspector Steve Fuse, Board of Trustees Liaison David Heiser. And as you can see, we have three of the five members of the board with us this evening, so that in order for an application to be approved, you must have a unanimous vote of all three of us. Anything short of that will result in the denial of the application. Because of the situation, every applicant has the right to delay the hearing of their application to our next meeting, where we expect to have a full complement of the board. So that you can make that decision at any time that you come up, or you can make that decision now, request a hearing next month, or you could hear your application this evening. So you have that choice. If you're going to be making a presentation, please come to the podium, state your name, your address, the nature of your variance, and if you're representing an applicant, the nature of your relationship as agent to the applicant. Our first application this evening is application ZBA 25-004, Shubin Ma and Wen He, Ten Boxwood Place legalized newly constructed 10-foot, 3-inch shed and wood platform in the side yard. Please.
Good evening. My name is Wen He. I'm the owner of Ten Boxwood Place. Today, I'm here to request to legalize the shed. I'm asking for 2.6 feet setback variance. On the left side of my property, if you went face to my property, there has been a shed since I bought the house. And the shed was in a bad condition recently, and last August, when Building Inspector came to the site for the setting inspection for another project, he noticed that the shed was collapsing, and he ordered me to fix. Unfortunately, it is not fixable. It is in a very bad condition. We decided to replace it on the same foundation, same location. We reuse the foundation and assemble the shed kit and build a replacement within the frame, existing frame. The shed was 120 square feet, less than the previous one. It is 2.4 feet away from the property line, so that's why I'm asking 2.6 feet setback variance. Hopefully, I can get approved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Were you aware that of the existence of the side yard setback requirement of 5 feet?
I did not.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. One of the principles that this board has been following over the years is that whether it be a deck or an accessory building, if it is replaced sufficiently in bad enough condition to have to be replaced, that the code be followed as a result of that. So by putting the shed where you did on the existing platform, you sort of did not follow that general principle that we adhere to, which created the concern for the variance. How difficult would it be to, since the, all the other parts of the shed conform to the code, how difficult would it be to shift it so that a variance is not necessary?
Unfortunately...
Have you looked into that?
Unfortunately, it cannot be movable. When we build the new replacement, we reinforce the poles underneath, so essentially, it will break if we move.
I'm trying to think. Steve, how would that be reinforced like that?
I don't know if she, when you say reinforced, did you put a footing underneath there? Is that what this?
Yeah, there was a footing there previously. There was, so we reinforced, put a lot of rocks around the foot.
Right, you can't really put a concrete pad, you know, without a permit, but if you had put on the corners, you put a footing or something like that, that would work.
Yes, that's...
Several years ago, when the village discovered that my shed was touching village property, a very corner of it was touching village property, I was ordered by the village under penalty of legal proceedings that I had to move the shed. So I had to hire a contractor who came with a forklift, covered my lawn with plywood, stuck the forklift under those openings that are there, lifted it, moved it to a legally occupying location. And $1,000 later, the shed was put in the proper position, but it was not anchored to anything. It was on stones and cinder blocks. And I'm looking over there, and it looks like a forklift can go under there.
You know, the old shed had a frame, and actually, when you see here, there was a frame, and I was still reuse the frame, and also within reuse the old foundation. If I move it, first of all, I cannot move the shed. And if I had to, and I have to redig and redo the foundation.
Excuse me, I just want to add something else. Also should be noted that the accessory structure is supposed to be 12 feet away from the primary building. If she moved it in, then she would be, she would need a zoning variance also, because she would be a little bit too close, because she's just beyond that 12 feet distance. So she's in between there. That also should be noted.
Yeah, that's important information. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So you basically have, what is it, Hobson's Choice? Is that what it's called? So either way, you're incurring a variance. So the question then becomes, which is the, you know, the most prudent course to follow? So, okay. Do you have any questions?
We haven't heard from the neighbors. I mean, I see the house. I mean, it looks pretty close, right, to the house that's looking at it. I mean, that would be one of my concerns, is if you're looking out the window, you see that. But we haven't heard anything from neighbors or anything?
There was a previous concern, right?
Right, this came to the attention by the neighbor. We haven't heard anything from the neighbor. The neighbor was notified by mail, and she's the next-door neighbor, and they didn't show up at the previous meeting, and this is the second meeting, so we haven't heard anything from the neighbor.
Okay, so there was no written. Just as a, anyone in the audience being that neighbor? No? Okay, all right. Just wanted a clarification. Glenn, do you have any?
I was just going to ask, I don't really understand the, how it's adhered, that it's not movable. I think, I think anything is movable. It's just a question of how you do it and how much it would cost. So I think it is possible. It doesn't mean we're against keeping it, it just means that I think it is movable. If it violates zoning, if it is where it is, and it violates zoning if you move it in the 2.6 feet, I would think, all things being equal, it probably affects the neighbor less by moving it closer to the house. Right? I'm not sure why there's the 12-foot number. So if someone is going to be hurt by it, I don't even really want to use the word hurt, it would be...
Affected.
Affected, right. It probably should be the homeowner, all things being equal. But I do want to ask this. So this replaced a shed that was already there. How long have you been in this house?
I've been here since 2007, so it's like a...
A long time.
Yeah, a long time.
And the shed that deteriorated was already there at the time?
Oh, yes. When I, I can show you that...
Oh, I believe you.
Yeah, this is a survey.
Right.
I can show you this there. It is here, this is shed. This is a shed.
Okay.
This is, the survey was did on 2008.
Okay. So, okay, so I'm just looking at the shed here, and so it already existed when she bought the house, and that never came up on a title report or anything?
No.
Okay. Does anybody want to see this?
No, I can see it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You said, you said that this was, so somebody was coming to approve another project, and that's where they caught?
Yes. The Building Inspector noticed the shed was collapsing. When he came, last year, I had a deck project.
Right.
Yes.
So in that year, did, were you told that it was too close to the setback to the neighbor, or you just got a new shed? I'm trying to figure out what brought this today.
The shed, actually, in the same location, there was an old one. It's been there all the time.
Right.
And when the Building Inspector noticed the shed was collapsing, so we teared it down and make a replacement to resolve the issue.
Right. But you didn't really resolve the issue of the broken shed, but I'm trying to figure out how you got here today.
Well, yeah, so, as she said, during another inspection for her deck, I noticed the shed was starting to be dilapidated. She had the option of tearing it down or putting a new shed, but as most people know, you don't need a permit necessarily for a shed unless it's put on a concrete pad or too close, or it's a certain height.
Right.
So measuring it, it's over the 10 feet, and it's too close, so it requires a permit, in this case, a zoning variance. So it came to light, because like you said, as she was building the shed, the neighbor called and wanted to make sure that a permit was being filed, so she had to stop and file for the permit.
Oh, that's what I was asking, what brought it a year later to come back here?
But if she had just fixed the shed, if it was fixable, then we wouldn't have had an issue?
Probably not, yeah, because it'd been there for years. It was a little bit lower, that shed, and it was under the square footage and under the height, so she would have, you know, she could have fixed it.
Didn't we have that garage that, that needed a variance, and there was, they couldn't, I don't remember, a couple of years ago, they could rebuild, I don't remember, they could rebuild it or they couldn't rebuild it. If anything happened, they got the variance.
Yeah.
But I think if anything happened after that, then I don't think they could replace it. But I don't exactly remember what happened there.
In an ideal world, when the shed was torn down, the old shed was removed, the question of being aware of the setback requirement should have been known, and I'm not saying that every owner in Ry Brook knows the thick building code, because it's a challenging document. But in an ideal world, you would have rebuilt the new shed 5 feet from the side yard requirement, and you would not have had to have a variance. That would be in an ideal world. Unfortunately, the ideal was not followed, and that's why you're here, and that's why we have to balance the factors in order to be able to make a decision regarding that.
I would be a little more concerned if, if the neighbor who called followed up, and I know we don't rely on them to make a decision, but it's one of the factors that we think about, and, you know, you better put it, the Hobson's Choice, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't kind of thing. And so you'd need a variance either way, and I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking, if that person were to come forward, I'd probably have a little more challenging decision to make. But I think he or she called, nothing written, didn't really follow up, and people that have really were concerned will follow up for some reason. So that kind of leads me to, I don't like either choice here, but I'm kind of not as adverse as I might be otherwise.
If it were a deck, and they were having loud parties with loud music, dancing all the time, it would be more of a problem to the neighbor, but it is a shed. And one way of mitigating your neighbor's concern would be to increase the amount of vegetation on the neighbor's side of the shed, so that the shed is not visible at all. Because it's not a question of noise, you're not going to be holding loud parties in the shed. It's just the visual impact on the neighbor, so that if you could find a way to mitigate that visual impact, it would go a long way to, I think, placating the concerns of the Let me just ask, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in the audience who wants to speak against the application? There being none either way, and no letters coming in, I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Public hearing is closed. Okay. What Steve said swayed me completely. Initially, I was going to propose, when I studied the application, that you move it, because, you know, it's, in my opinion, it's movable at a cost. But when I found out that it's going to trigger another variance, that, I think, impacted my thought process to view the application favorably. So, you know, that's sort of where I stand on that.
Yeah, I mean, that changed the whole dynamic of the conversation, for sure.
Okay. All right. Let me just go through quickly...
And that, sorry, and then the other thing, not hearing from that neighbor, too, that originally made that call.
Right, but, you know, we can't base a decision on the fact of the, you know, whether one person or 100 people are protesting, we have to use the five factors. And in this case, I think the only file fact, the only factors that are relevant is that it is, it is a substantial variance, and that it is the smallest variance that can be achieved without not meeting the applicant's concerns. I don't think it's a character issue, I don't think it's an environmental issue, you know, and it is self-created. Okay? Let me read the resolution. Whereas application has been made to the zoning board of appeals by Shubin Ma and Wen He, collectively, the applicant seeks relief from the following requirements of the Ry Brook zoning code, Section 250-6, Section B, Item 1, Part H. The minimum required setback for detached accessory building is 5 feet. The applicant's detached shed structure is situated approximately 2.4 feet from the side property line, thereby requiring a variance of 2.6 feet. Whereas a duly advertised public hearing was held on April 1st and closed on April 1st, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given such opportunity. And whereas the proposed action is a type II action pursuant to the state of New York's Environmental Quality Review Act, and accordingly, no further environmental review is required. Whereas the board from the application, after viewing the premises and neighborhood concerned, and upon considering each of the factors set forth in Section 250, Section 13, Part G, Item B, numbers 2A through E of the Ry Brook Code, finds for the variance above, the required variance will not create an adverse impact to the character of the neighborhood. The benefits the applicant seeks cannot be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue, and that does not require the variance. Three, the variance, requested variance is substantial. The proposed variance will not create any adverse impacts to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And five, the need for the variance is self-created. Now therefore be it resolved, that said application is hereby provisionally granted on the following conditions. No permit or certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the applicant has paid in full all application and consultant fees incurred by the village in connection with the review of this application. Okay. Before we take the vote for the benefit of the viewing public, the only thing I would say is, if you are going to be put in a situation like this, please call the building inspector, check what the side yard, generally what the bulk standards are, and in that case, you would have known beforehand what the limitation was, rather than having to go through the whole process of going through a variance application. Okay? Steve is excused. Glenn?
Question.
Yes.
You mentioned the vegetation. I assume that's just a suggestion...
You only have 2 point, you know, you don't have a lot of space.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and the other, the homeowner on the other side actually may not want vegetation on their side, because it comes into their property, so they may not mind it. So it's just, I'm just going to say, it's not part of this, the variance, but perhaps if your neighbor said something, you might want to try to see what you can do to accommodate them within reason. And having said that, I'm a yes.
As long as it's not a 10-foot wall.
Yeah.
Okay. Glenn, yes? Jamie?
Yes.
Don, yes? Application approved. Three yeses, two excused, no nays. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can move forward. large existing deck.
Hi, my name is Mike Weinberg. I live at 505 Comley Avenue. I've been there for almost 10 years now. Ever since I bought the house, the deck was in not great shape. I've done everything I can to repair it. Now it really just needs to be replaced. Due to the size of my property, the size of my driveway and the house, the driveway and the house already exceeds the impervious coverage allowed. So any change modified to the deck would require zoning approval. As we looked at the deck, we were hoping to extend the size of the deck by 150 square feet.
Right. Okay, and you're changing the nature of the construction materials also, is that correct?
Yeah, we'll put in, it's like that truck material.
Right, and metal railings as opposed?
Metal railings.
Okay. The major concern that I have is the impervious coverage, that you're, you know, when you drive by and you look at the property, beautiful house, you know, nice landscaping, but an awful lot of asphalt. And normally, when we have an application of this nature, the board has typically asked for some kind of give and take in terms of a reduction of the impervious coverage elsewhere to offset, let's say, the increase in impervious coverage by expansion of the deck. So my question to you then would be, where, where would it come from if it's feasible? If it's not feasible, why not? And how will it impact, you know, the quality of your life? Because it is a substantial variance, and it's an awful lot of concrete. You're in an R-15 zone, and when our illustrious Board of Trustees generated the bulk standards for an R-15 property, they had something in mind, so much bulk for the footprint, so much for impervious coverage. And you're blowing the doors off this one, on this application, so the ball's in your court.
You got it. So the house, from my understanding, when it was originally built, the driveway was built the way it was built, and the house was built the way it was built, so it already well exceeded the impervious coverage. A few years ago, I did have my basement finished, and when I did have the basement finished, there was a concern of the water and where the water was coming out. We had to bring in a engineer with Mike Izzo at the time, and the answer was, when the house was built, there were three cul-de-sacs that were built in the backyard. They asked us at that time to add a fourth cul-de-sac for that purpose, and we did. And we haven't had any issues since. I think when the house was built, whoever built the deck, it was more of a spec house, and they didn't think about it. But in terms of enjoying the backyard, which doesn't get a whole lot of light, just extending it 150 square feet would mean a lot. It's not changing everything. I wouldn't know where to take away from impervious coverage. I don't think I could take away from the structure of the house.
Right.
And in terms of the driveway, I wouldn't know where to take away from the driveway.
Now, when you, when you look at it, part of the problem or challenge is the circular driveway. Anytime there's a circular driveway, there's a de facto increase in impervious coverage. And one can make the case that being on Comley, and there's a hill there, and those cars come flying off that hill rather rapidly. I mean, it's been, I've lived here 50 years, and I walk that street all the time, and there's a blind coverage when those cars are coming up from Connecticut. I almost expect them to hydroplane, you know, back into the lower ground, going into King Street. So I can, I can see the case for the driveway, but what surprised me and concerned me was the length of that other driveway on the right of the...
How far it goes all the way back.
It goes all the way back. It's almost as if you're covering the entire property with asphalt, and the R-15 code basically tries to discourage that by limiting it.
That's the way the house was bought.
Or built.
I think that's the way the house was built.
Built, right. I think I know, I knew the owner, the developer who built them both, so I mean, I'm...
What do you use that, I'm sorry, Don, what do you use that, the side, is it part, is it driveway that goes straight back? So what do you use that driveway for? That part that goes back, the last 10 feet?
Now that I have two kids in college, extra parking, like when my daughter, like, now lives in the city, I keep her car back there, but...
But you also have the circular driveway.
There's not much that we use that back driveway for, but I think the landscapers use it to get back to the backyard.
And the only reason I mention it is that if you're looking for a place to decrease the impervious surface, that's probably one of the areas that you might be able to do so.
Probably the only place.
Yeah.
And you can see the box there that goes...
And if I went, there's like, we did put a gate there. Used to have a dog, so we had a gate there. But... But, I mean, otherwise we could, I don't know, then we'd just be moving it and the gate, or just putting grass down.
Well, I'm just saying, if that's a concern for us, then that's the one place that I'm trying to think where you could take--
I think it's so far over the coverage to begin with.
Yeah, but one of the, one of the points that we have to consider is this the smallest variance possible that allows the applicant to meet their needs? And you've expressed the need to have a larger deck for social reasons, fire pits or whatever. So that need can be met with the variance. But the board would also like to see some kind of possible reduction in the impervious coverage, so it isn't as egregious.
Towards the back of that driveway you're referring, there are a set of steps--
Yeah, I see the steps.
--that go down to the basement. So there is some need for that, I guess, that driveway back there for people to get in and access the basement.
I'm looking at past that flag walk. I'm looking at the survey. So past the flag walk that leads to the steps, there's a rectangle with a, there's a metal gate, and it says asphalt drive 25 feet to foundation. So Steve, can you estimate from what you have in front of you, the square footage of that block?
It looks to be about 20 by, looks to be about 20 by 22, 23. What would you say it was?
I have no idea.
I mean, you can see that the side yard setback there is 25, almost 26 feet at the top, and 25 feet there. So 25 feet maybe, yeah, by 25 by 15 probably. That's what it looks like.
That's the only possible place that allows you to park those extra cars in that area? See that? You're looking at--
And it just gives access to the backyard for landscapers to be able to get back there.
Well, I'm not asking you to put a wall up, I'm just asking you to eliminate the impervious coverage that still allows transit to the backyard. It just means that they go over fewer asphalt and more grass.
At the end of that driveway, is it, is it, it's all level to the backyard?
Is it?
That's what exactly he says it is. So I'm not, I'm not saying it's convenient, and I'm not saying it's, it doesn't cost a little bit. But I think the struggle here is that you're so over that you're, and I understand why everyone wants a bigger deck, wants more, more usable, I guess, more usable deck. Yeah. But, but you also have outdoor space on, on a grass also, so, but, but, but I understand people want to be there. So it's, your deck is a kind of want, and I understand.
That's what they want.
It's a want. It's a want, not quite as moving as a need, right, for us to balance.
The second variance, by the way, is, it's not a problem at all. It's de minimis. It's the impervious coverage. You're, you're basically looking at 2,000 square feet above bulk standards for an R-15. 2,000 square feet is requested, 2,101.5 square feet. That's huge.
Well, it's only 150 more than what was there that was already approved. So I'm not asking for 2,000. I'm just asking to extend the coverage of the deck to rebuild it.
But a variance is required for 2,101 square feet. Now, it may not seem significant from the point of view of chopping off that block. The way I see it, the only issue is cost, because it's not going to affect access by the landscaper. It's not going to provide an obstacle that you can't get through. There is a fence there, but there's no dog now.
Well, there will be.
Then you could put the fence at the end of the parking area, closer to the flagstone walkway. That, that's my concern. I mean, I'm having a really hard time with the size of the impervious coverage.
Just, just so, because we've had, when we've had a minimum number of board members, it's never too late, if we don't vote for you to want to rethink this and/or perhaps get two more board members who might have a difference of opinion.
I'd rather have the deck 150 square feet, and if I have to take 150 square feet off the back end of that driveway, I'll take 150 square feet off the back end of the driveway.
Okay. I was just giving you, because I didn't say we would agree to that yet, but I'm just saying, I'm just giving you the option if, if you want this, two more board members.
And there's no neighbor that could see into my backyard?
I don't think it's a, but I don't think it's--
All the draining that could be a concern on the impervious coverage?
But I don't, I don't think we think of it as a visual thing, because I think a lot of, I think a lot of yards are not visible. But it's not about who can see in. It's about your neighbor who then wants, you know, we try to be fair. Your neighbor will want to do the same thing. And then another neighbor might say, you did this and allowed it, why? Especially when it's a, you know, again, a want, not, not a need. You're not rebuilding your deck and it's falling apart, but while you're doing it, you know, so I understand why you want it, but again, it's, it's not just that you're invisible to the other people.
Christian, let me ask you this question from a legal advice point of view. If, if the board feels that they would grant the variance for the expanded deck with the proviso that there's a reduction of impervious coverage, can that be done without having to refile another plan to Steve for approval? And both of you can weigh in on that.
I think it would, it would really be up to Steve on whether or not that would be considered a substantial revision. I mean, here they would be, the applicant would be taking away existing--
The applicant would be taking away--
It's a reduction, not an increase.
Reduction, but it would be an amendment to the plans, so I, I would really have to defer to Steve on whether or not that would be a substantial revision.
You comfortable with that?
Yeah. Yeah, I would need a revised plan showing what was going to be removed, so we can memorialize that. I don't think it's difficult to get a plan just showing that, whatever square footage you guys come up with.
But I, I don't want to hold up the applicant if I, if I avoid it.
No, he's still going, going to ARB, you know, in a few, in a couple of weeks, so it wouldn't--
So if, if we approve that tonight with the proviso that that survey submitted, that block is removed, is that sufficient enough for you?
Sure, we can note that, and then--
And not delay the application going forward?
It wouldn't get delayed.
Yeah, that, that can be a condition of approval, upon resubmission of plans showing that being removed to the satisfaction of the building inspector.
Just to clarify, are you talking the entire, like you said, 20, 20 by 15 or 20?
That's up to you guys, what, what you want.
I would hope it wouldn't be more than 150 square feet.
Right, because that's--
I'm just talking about the block, whatever that block is.
Yeah, well, if it's 100 square feet, I'm hoping it's, I'm not being asked to move more than 150 square feet.
Well, we got an estimate for the--
No, you guys have to make a decision. Is it, is he giving back just 150 square feet that he wants to expand the deck, or is he removing that whole asphalt block?
I'm looking at the block. I'm looking at the block.
Then that's what you guys have to make a decision on.
Then where does that start to--
Well, you don't have a copy, but I have, you can see, oh, okay.
How far from the steps?
You could point out, if you look at Steve's plan--
I can't own my house.
You know, they're talking about that whole, that whole block there, just taking that out.
The rectangle.
Yeah, just take this block out. It's going to be more than 100 square feet.
It stops--
It's going to be a lot more than 150 square feet.
It stops before the, the flag walk.
Yeah.
You want to maintain the rectangular shape of it, right? So you would have to come in from the railing toward the street, toward, toward Comley, X amount of feet, because you're only looking at, you can only legislate the length, but you can't legislate the width, because you don't know what the width is now, right?
No, we don't know, we don't know how far, we know, we can see the 25 feet, we know it's, the width is 25 feet, we know that. But we don't know what the length is.
What's 25 into 150? Six, right? So you're talking about six feet, six by 25.
So you're asking me to take away six feet of driveway?
No, we're just--
And redo the Belgium block around it, redo the fence?
To get the deck.
To get the deck.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, this is kind of like, with this line I'm pointing, this, that arrow, it's kind of like an artificial rectangle, so to me, it doesn't, I don't, I don't think he has to take this whole--
Yeah.
Separate structure.
Right, right. It, it kind of looks it on this thing, but it's just one long driveway.
Yeah.
So, so if he took six feet off, or 10 feet off, or seven, whatever it is, five feet, whatever it is, he still has the same long driveway, just a little shorter.
Shorter, yeah.
It's almost not like it's a separate patio behind the driveway. So I'd be comfortable one for one. I don't have a problem with that. You know, he already has this, I don't want him to have to give up more than he's getting, because you already have what you have. And I don't think it matters visually, because it's not like a, it's not like--
No, it's just cost.
No, I could, I could live with that.
Yeah.
I could live with that.
It's just cost.
Yeah. It's always cost. But, but again, it's not like it's a separate, as I said, it's not like it's flagstone, and then you're going to take half of it away, and then it's really small, and then you have blacktop in front of it, right? Because that's kind of, you could look at it like a separate area, but that's what I'm saying. I think it's one driveway.
So I'd rather remove the blacktop.
You just, yeah, you just--
Just about half that, that--
Yeah. Yeah, right.
If it is gravel, I have to put grass on it.
That's your choice, as long as it's not--
As long as it's not blacktop?
As long as it's not pervious.
Yeah.
Gravel is considered impervious by the code, so it'd have to be, go back to grass.
Okay. Which will make the gardens happy, right? Having more gravel.
The contractor will be happy.
Yeah, contract.
And, and there should be some as-built submitted as well, just to verify that what, yeah.
And Stephen, I'm not sure how this applies, because I've never seen it done here, but there are, if, if parking was a major thing for you, they have those, those surfaces, you know, they put the, I don't know, they're, I don't know, they're like a plastic or something.
Like a concrete, like a creek with the, the grass can go up in the middle?
Correct. But it's not, not even that. It's more, because we did this in another house I have, we, we took the driveway, but we didn't want to lose the parking because we couldn't, so we, we put--
Yeah, you just asked me what I used it for.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just been there since I've owned the house for 10 years.
No, but you said you're, but no, but you said you're, I'm saying if--
Like, if, what's it used for? That's what it used for?
No, but if you wanted to keep it and not park on grass, there are, there is something, it's like round plastic, and it all connects on the ground, and the grass grows under it, it could support a car.
You know how many cars you can fit on that thing and still stay 25 feet away from the street?
I think so, but I was just saying, I don't know--
I mean, six times 25 is 150. So if you're asking me to take off six feet, so I could have a deck?
Right. I think it's--
I would do that.
And I can understand--
I wouldn't like it, but I would do it.
I agree, I agree to the 150 number, six feet. So that way, Christian, can you write up while we're proceeding here, so that the applicant understands what the condition is, your as-built and all that other stuff?
And I'll be able to maintain my schedule of getting it built?
Yes.
Assuming I get architectural review work?
And as long as you get that amended plan to take the six feet off. You just can't come in and just draw a line, is that correct? Am I correct on that?
Yeah, your engineer or whoever, he can just, you know, he's got it on his computer, he can just show that, kind of remove that, that six by 25 feet.
So whenever you're going--
Do all new impervious calculations have to be redone? Because that's $1,000 to the survey company--
No, no.
Something else to the engineer.
Yeah, I can just do that. I can pencil that in, don't worry about that.
Good.
You'll leave it as built as planned.
Yeah.
All right. I'll read the resolution.
Wait, is there anybody--
I'm going to hand you this version, so you can read it off of the petition.
Okay, all right, good. Just as we're going along, anyone in the audience want to speak for the application? Anyone want to speak against the application? Here there being none, motion to close the public hearing?
So much.
Motion to close? Now you can--
Hearing is closed. I can go ahead and--
Wait, I do have one, okay, six feet probably wouldn't impact it. There's an outdoor faucet, like hose, that's beyond the steps.
Not in the ground.
But it's also not on the driveway. Never mind. Just making sure.
Okay. All right, good. It is beautiful house, by the way.
Thank you.
Beautiful house. Actually, the person who built it lived next door.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. He lived next door, and he built both of them.
He just should have built a bigger deck.
Or less of a driveway.
Or you might have gotten less driver when they did it.
Less driveway.
You don't know, you don't know what they were talking about when they built the house. They might have wanted more frontage and less deck.
We don't know.
You don't know.
Okay, let me go ahead with, oh, you have something. Excellent. All right. Okay. And then I'll read yours. Whereas application has been made to the zoning board of appeals by Michael Weinberg, the applicant for a variance in connection with the construction of a new deck at property located at 505 Comley Avenue in an R-15 zoning district approximately 50 feet from the intersection of Maplewood Lane and Comley Place?
Ave.
Ave, yeah. I just, there's a misspelling in Comley, so I focused on the P in Comley. Designated and shown on the tax map of the village of Rybrough is parcel ID number 136.22-1-11, the property, whereas the applicant seeks relief from the following requirements of the Rybrough zoning code. One, section 250-37, part C, the maximum allowable total impervious coverage is 5,307.28 square feet. Okay, now, this is going to be, are you going to reduce that by 150 as I read it?
Yes.
Well, you can do that in your head, because I can't. The existing non-conforming total impervious coverage is, what number? 7,108.5?
Well, the existing would be the same, and then the proposed, we need to subtract it from the proposed.
Okay. Is 7,258.5 square feet the proposed deck construction and expansion will result in total impervious coverage of?
7,000.
7,258, just goes back to what exists, yeah. Because we get it back there.
Yeah. Okay, 7,358 square feet.
7,258.
7,258. Okay. Therefore, total impervious coverage variance of, what's the number?
It would be-- The original number? 2,251 and a half.
2,000, what is that again? Point five square feet is required, requested. Secondly, 250, section 250-20, part G, item three, the minimum required rear yard setback is 40 feet. The proposed deck expansion will result in a rear yard deck setback of 39.82 feet, thereby requiring a rear yard setback variance of .18. Whereas a duly advertised public hearing was held on April 1st and closed on April 1st, 2025, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given such opportunity. Whereas the proposed action is a type II action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and accordingly, no further environmental review is required. Whereas the board from the application after viewing the premises and neighborhood concern, and upon considering each of the factors set forth at section 250-- concern, and upon considering each of the factors set forth in section 250-13, section G, part two, items 2A through E, the Rybrook Code finds for the variance above, the requested variances will not create an adverse impact to the character of the neighborhood. Two, the benefits the applicant seeks cannot be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the variances. Three, the requested variances are substantial, at least one of them is, the requested variances will not create any adverse impact to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And five, the need for the variance is self-created. Now therefore, be it resolved that said application is hereby provisionally granted on the following conditions: no permit or certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the applicants have paid in full all application and consultant fees incurred by the village in connection with the review of this application. Secondly, this is the wording of the, subject to revision of the plans showing removal of 150 square feet to the satisfaction of the building inspector of the asphalt driveway at the rear of the driveway. And just to make sure for the record, that is the back end of that, okay? Six feet by 25, or six feet by whatever the width is. Okay. Okay, now Steve is excused, and Joel is excused. Okay, so Glenn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yes, application approved, three yeses, two excused, no nays.
Thank you very much.
Okay, congratulations.
Steve, when do you need to revise plans to buy?
This week is good.
I'll try. I got to deal with an architect and engineer to get them to, get them to as soon as I can.
How, how far do you live from Brian Balanov?
From who?
Brian? Do you know Brian? He's on Comley.
Which number?
Oh, I don't know.
There you go.
Because there's a big difference between 503 and 505.
Yes.
Yeah.
Big difference.
Because McNeice crosses over Magnolia.
Oh, okay. I don't know, he's on the, towards-
There's only one more house, and then it's Greenwich.
Oh, I see, okay. He's probably closer. I think, what's the first street off Comley?
On the right or the left?
I figured that.
It doesn't look right.
Yeah, that's okay. That's okay.
Maplewood, not Maplewood, right? No? It's not Maplewood.
Thank you very much. Steve, I'll get that to you more. Thank you.
Okay, the next application is application ZBA 25-006, Jamie Billington and Cara Billington, 6 Bondwood Road, new rear deck and patio. So you had a chance to witness how sausage is being made. That was a very rare thing that, that we did in terms of, in terms of rewriting the thing, not asking for a full, complete deck. That may be a little uncomfortable, but it is what it is. Please.
All right. My name is Evan Sikovsky. I'm the architect for the project, 6 Bondwood. So this is a project which you're all probably already somewhat familiar with. We've been here before. But, so this particular variance today focuses on the backyard. So the original approved plans that are currently permitted and under construction for the house, we had a deck that was in the middle. I can actually show you that really quick. And this is just what the site plan looked like. So this was the deck in the middle, there was an existing patio off to the side over there. And now that the house is under construction and that addition, that shaded area in the back is constructed, and we can stand back there, it sort of became apparent that this wasn't the best layout, you know, for the homeowner, for aesthetics, just in overall use of the, the yard. And so the idea was, well, it would be much better if we could just swap the deck with the patio, so that, you know, you don't have this deck just sticking out and blocking the pool from the patio. And we were kind of limited on the shape of that deck anyway, because of the way it was shoehorned in there. So what we were, what we would love to do is to move that deck off to the side, swap it with the patio, so that that's in the middle, you can come out to the deck, you can see the pool, you can come down and enjoy the use of the patio. The problem is that the lot that this house is on is not rectangular. It has a pretty sharp angle to the back lot line there. And because of that, our rear setback, which you can see is that dashed line there, it cuts across the corner of what we would like to do with the layout of this deck.
I'm not, I'm not, oh.
So, here, I can highlight it in red. So our required setback is this line right here.
Oh, I see.
And that's because of the angle. So when we were in the middle over here, we were fine, right? We had something like that rectangle on the approved plans. But if we want to just simply swap, you know, deck for patio, we run into this issue with the angled rear lot line and cutting that corner of the deck. So, you know, we looked at it obviously a couple of other ways. We thought, you know, we could cut that corner off. It, it really was just not going to work with, you know, what I would say is a pretty ordinary furniture arrangement, you know, they just want to have a grill and a, and a nice table out there. It really just cuts off the function of that space. In terms of this issue, I mean, the, the deck itself, it complies in every other way with the code. It's under 4% of the lot size, it's not infringing on the side lot line. Our previous, one of our previous variances was for impervious coverage. In doing this swap, because we're cutting out, we're going to eliminate that, oops, we're going to eliminate that part of the patio that's out here, we're actually reducing our lot coverage from even what we were granted a year ago. So, so we're reducing lot coverage, we're compliant in every other way, but unfortunately, just to get something that's functional and in terms of layout, we would be encroaching on that corner to 29 and a half feet, you know, directly on the corner right there. And then obviously, that line, you know, that rear lot goes like that, so it just expands from there in terms of the separation.
Normally, when we have an application of this nature, the first word that comes to mind, and Joel isn't here, but he would say creep, in, in that, you know, you come for a variance, you get a variance, and then you come back, and you have a change of mind, and you want to do something else. I don't put that in this particular category. I think you're not necessarily, doesn't appear that you're doing this for, you know-
No, and it's not related to the other variances that we got in any way, so.
Yes, yes, right. And you, you are reducing a significant amount, which, which adds, adds to your case, I believe.
Can you just remind me what the prior variance was?
So there were two. One was, I think there were two. It's been a while now.
It was the impervious coverage.
Impervious is one, and then the FAR, I believe, was the other one, right? For the house itself?
Yes, because we were on non-compliant-
Okay.
Lots originally.
Okay, okay.
Maximum gross floor area was one, and then we had the impervious, which even though it doesn't say yes on here, I think was the other one, so.
Yep.
I went through this exact thing probably 15 years ago, because my lot does the, doesn't go straight across, it goes that way. I mean, it was almost identical, just that little corner.
It's, it's frustrating, and it's, and it's easy to miss, as I think Steve can, and I don't know if you remember, but was almost ready to just put us right on the ARB agenda, and I was like, that's great, but I was like, ah, this could be problematic when we have to close out the project. I think we should, we should try to make sure we do this the right way, so.
Okay. I don't have any other concerns, you know. Would you consider this a substantial variance, or does it mean-
What's the number? I don't, I forget.
It's, I think it's 5.5.
5.5.
Yeah, just in that corner. And again, obviously, the corner itself is the most egregious part.
I don't, I don't necessarily, even though it, mathematically, it's over the mythical 10, but I don't think it's a problem. The only one I can see is that the, the application is self-created. That's the only one. Other than that, I think the other factors are met. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak for the application? Anyone want to speak against the application? Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, public hearing is closed, okay. Whereas application has been made to the zoning board of appeals by Jamie and Cara Billington, collectively the applicants, for a variance in connection with the construction of a new deck on property located at 6 Bondwood Road in R-12 zoning district approximately 75 feet from the intersection of Elm Hill Drive and Bondwood Road, designated and shown on the tax map of the village of Rybrook as parcel ID number 135.50-1-40, and, of the property. And whereas the applicant seeks relief from the following requirements of the Rybrook zoning code. Section 250-21, section G, item three, the minimum required rear yard setback is 35 feet. The proposed rear deck will result in a rear deck setback of 29.5 feet, thereby requiring a rear yard setback of 5.5 feet. Whereas a duly advertised public hearing was held on April 1st, 2025, and closed on April 1st, 2025, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given such opportunity. Whereas the proposed action is a type-two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and accordingly, no further environmental review is required. Whereas the board from the application, after viewing the premises and neighborhood concern, and upon considering each of the factors set forth in section 250-13, section G, item B, items 2A through E, the Rybrook Code finds for the variance will not create an adverse impact the applicant seeks cannot be achieved through another method, the requested variance is not substantial, the requested variance will not create any adverse impacts to the neighborhood, and the need for the variance is self-created. Therefore, be it resolved that said application is hereby provisionally granted in the following conditions: no permit or certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the applicants have paid in full all application and consultant fees incurred by the village in connection with the review of this application. Okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, let me just, excused. Okay, Glenn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
None, yes, application approved, three yeses, zero nays, two excused. Okay? Congratulations.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Don't come back.
I was going to say, I don't know, I don't know, you know, the, the house, the original project didn't get built, but it's very coincidental that this is, we were here in March of '23, well, and then April of '24, and now it's April of '25, and I'm swearing to you right now, we are not coming back next year.
Okay.
We missed you, we came back to see you, or whatever.
Okay.
I think we came back, I was covering the last time we were here.
Is that right?
I thought you were just the normal.
No, I'm, I'm covering Florida, like, all the-
That's the first person who's ever called Christian normal, so you know.
I appreciate it. I take it where I feel.
Thank you.
Okay. Good luck. The last item is the approval of the last month's summary you earned here.